Good evening. Welcome to this virtual forum with the candidates for South Kitzab School District Directors for Districts 1, 2, and 5. Members of the audience, closed captioning has been enabled. The dropdown menu for captioning will allow you to pick the language of your choice. Tonight's forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Kitzab, which is recording this event for later access. No part of this recording may be used for any purpose without the express written permission of the League of Women Voters of Kitzab. My name is Janet Stegmeier, and I will be the moderator for this forum. The League of Women Voters, which celebrated its 100th anniversary in 2020, is proud to be a nonpartisan organization, neither supporting nor opposing candidates and political parties. The League of Women Voters of Kitzab would like to acknowledge that the South Kitzab School District rests within the ancestral territory of the Suquamish people. We thank them and their ancestors for protecting the local land and waters for future generations. The public was invited to send in questions through the League's website. Please understand that we will not ask yes or no questions, or what we call loaded questions. If you still have questions after tonight's forum, we encourage you to ask the candidates themselves. Their contact information is in the Kitzab County Voters Pamphlet that you should have received through the mail, and the pamphlet is also available online at the Kitzab County Auditor's election website. Candidates for School Director District 1 are Mr. John Semel and Ms. Kate Espy. For District 2 are Ms. Megan Higgins and Mr. JB Cross. Candidates for District 5 are Mr. Jay Villers and Ms. Rhonda Edwards. All candidates listed on the ballot were invited to this forum. Please note that although candidates must reside in a particular district, voters who live anywhere in the South Kitzab School District may vote for all three of the directors for Districts 1, 2, and 5. Candidates, thanks to all of you for stepping up to offer your skills and talents in service to the school district. We ask that during this forum, you maintain civility with one another. During tonight's forum, we will start in the order, and your names appear on the ballot, and go in rotation after that. You will have 60 seconds to respond to each question. If you have answered a question and have time remaining, you may speak about a previous question or clarify a statement. If you'd like me to repeat a question, please let me know. At the end of the forum, each candidate will have 1 and 1/2 minutes to make a closing statement. If you run out of time, you may finish your sentence. Our timekeeper will maintain the countdown electronic clock. Crosstalk is not permitted. All remarks and questions by the candidates are to be directed to the audience or to me as the moderator. So, question 1, it'll be 60 seconds to respond. And the question is, in most school districts, including South Kitzab, school board directors' positions are unpaid or have a small stipend for attending meetings. What are your motivations for volunteering so much of your time to our community schools? Mr. Semel?
Yes, first of all, hopefully you can hear me. Just want to thank you guys for having me on tonight and setting this up. The reason why I'm running for school board is I'm just a concerned father, a concerned citizen, and I think that the school board is important for our for the city we live in to thrive. We need to have a great school system, which then helps the kids, which then helps employers like myself, and really the community. It's all about the community. So, I just want to use my talents and help the schools thrive. That's really what I want to do. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Espy?
Thank you. So, I was appointed in November or December of 2021, and so I've got 2 and 1/2 years under my belt, and I want to continue to help our kids of South Kitzab. Both my kids went through the school system, and I want to be there to listen to them, their parents, the school district. I'm also the legislative rep, and I want to continue to advocate for what the state of Washington should be doing for our schools. But the biggest motivation are our students. They need our voice on the board, and I want to continue to be that voice on the board so that they and their parents and everyone else knows that the board is there to help them and do the best for our students.
Thank you. Ms. Higgins?
Hi, I'm Megan Higgins, and it is a big commitment to be on the school board. I have learned as I researched and have looked into it. There are meetings to attend, and there's a lot of hours you need to put into understanding what is going to be talked about at the meeting so that you can respond and vote on things and be informed. And the reason I'm willing to do that is I'm a mom of young kids, and I am invested in this school district. And I began attending school board meetings because I was concerned about the facilities, and I showed up and I said, "How can I help?" And that's my attitude, and I have the privilege that I have time or I want to make time. My time is limited with three young kids, but I know that this is important and valuable in the community, that school board members are important, and they make a lot of influence in our schools. And so that is why I'm willing to volunteer my time.
Thank you. Mr. Cross?
Yeah, I decided I wanted to run. I've been attending school board meetings for the past 3, maybe 3 and 1/2 years on a regular basis. And the job of the school board, their number one job is to educate the kids. It's about educating. And I don't think I've seen one meeting where anything about actual education and why our testing is so low and why, you know, especially after the close down of the schools. And I think we need to start focusing on education period and really pinpoint and get the kids up to par on reading and mathematics because it's being below 50%, there's no reason we shouldn't be 80% passing the standard test. And I just don't see a lot of that concern on the board. So, I want to get in there for the kids, you know, education is my focus.
Thank you. Mr. Villers?
Hi, Jay Villers. And yeah, my main motivation is I chose to live in this community over 25 years ago, and I raised my 3 kids here. I've worked in the community over 15, probably 20 years in education. I have a lot of experience and have seen a lot of the positives and the negatives that have happened in this. And I really am hoping that I'd be on the school board, I can help improve community relations. And of course, the number one thing is for student achievement. And I think the board would, you know, works hard at that. And we also need to influence the legislature of the state of Washington to change things if we can for the better. And so we have to work together with that. So, I'm ready to do that. I know it's a job that takes a lot of time, effort. You need to be visible. And anyway, I'm excited to get back in that because I just love the school community and the students that have come from South Kitzab are great. The staff is great. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Edwards? You're muted, Ms. Edwards.
There you go. Hi, everybody. I'm Rhonda Edwards, and I'm running for position number 5. I am in a position right now, after selling a couple of my businesses, I have some extra time, and I thought about where would I be best to place that time? And I think it is the school district. I've been going to the meetings, and I find, you know, several problems that need to be addressed, and I just don't see the board reflecting on what the problem is and coming up with solutions. There's never any discussion about the 3rd graders that can't read at 3rd grade level, and what are we going to do about it? I heard Mr. Winter say that he hopes to get it up to 50% by the end of next year. And I don't think hope is a plan. At least, it never has been in my business. I've always had business plans. I've always had budgets. I've always had to look ahead at economies going up and down. I've always had to prepare for the future, have reserves. And I just don't see the board functioning for the best interest of the children.
Thank you. Question 2. South Kitzab School District has 10 elementary schools, 3 middle schools, 1 main high school, 1 alternative high school, and 1 K-12 online academy. Please comment on the schools you have visited and what your responses are to their facilities, programs, and staffing. 60 seconds. We'll start with Ms. Espy.
I have been to almost all of the schools sometime or another. And because our newest schools are over 30 years old, our really old schools are in pretty bad shape, even though the school district has done its best to keep them upgraded as well as possible and making them as safe as possible. But it's important to get around to all the different schools and see how the kids are doing in those schools. Again, one of the things that needs to be done is getting our schools up to date and safe for our kids. And when you go around and see those schools, you realize there's only so much that can be done right now, and they need to be replaced or upgraded as much as possible. But this important part of what a school board director does is get out there and see the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Higgins?
I have been inside Cedar Heights and Marcus Whitman. Mullenex, I've been on the outside. My kid goes to soccer practice there, and so I'm there often. And Manchester Elementary, I'm naming a few, but there's a few more. But the point is Cedar Heights is sinking, and that is a terrible state to be in. And we need to do better for our kids. We can't have our kids attending a sinking school. And Mullenex is, I think, the last building that was built in the district, Mullenex Elementary. And I spoke with the principal of Mullenex Elementary, and I was like, "You have one of the nicest buildings in the district." And she goes, "Yes, however, it is also in need of repair because it has been so many years." And any building that is over 30 years old needs repairs. And so, all of them have lots of needs, and that is the state that I find our facilities in.
Thank you. Mr. Cross?
I have children that went through South Colby and one's still attending. I have one daughter that's in the Explorer Academy doing online, and then I have one that went to Cedwick and just started high school. I actually went to South Colby, Alala Orchard Heights, Marcus Whitman, when I was growing up in the community. So, I haven't visited any of the other schools recently besides what my children went to. I did go to Marcus for a school event for budget issues when they were talking about laying off some teachers because of the budget shortfalls. And it's pretty much just like Cedwick, Cedar Heights. I went there for a bond presentation, and it needs some work. I mean, all in all, the schools are pretty solid. They just need the upkeep. South Colby, I know it's the heating issue down there is a big deal, but they make these nice little mini splits, they're called, for heating and air conditioning, and those are pretty neat and not super expensive, and that would fix a big problem there.
Thank you. Mr. Villers?
Well, having worked in the district at the district level, I've been at all the schools and have campaigned for several years about trying to find resources that will help benefit the 30-year-old schools that we have and the problems that they occur. And I'm hoping as we move, not hoping, but what I'd like to find is the board to find some solutions that could work with the community so that we can have a stable set of resources that the school district can work with so that we can repair those and make those changes. One thing I think that we don't think about is all ADA-type of improvements. When you upgrade a school, you do more ADA improvement. If it's been 30 years old, there's not as many of the improvements that are done, and I think our kids deserve that. And I think that getting those things in place as a building principal, it took a long time for me to get a door for kids to come in and handicap as they walked in, an opening door, but we finally did it with our own funds from the district. So, that's what I've been hoping for.
Thank you. Ms. Edwards?
Yes, well, I have been very blessed in my life with 3 wonderful kids that went through South Kitzab. And also, my brothers and sisters had children and went through all the schools with them as well. They all live in the area, and then they blessed us with 24 grandkids. So, between Grandma Day and Parents' Day and every sport that they played, I've been in every single school. Now, have I sat down and talked to teachers in classrooms? No. But I know their gyms and I know their hallways very well. Probably the only one I don't know is Sunny Slope, but the rest I do know. And I would agree with everybody. The schools need repair. I believe that some of our capital levies that were passed by parents with expectations of certain repairs that should have been done were not done. I don't know why, because I wasn't on the board at that time. But what I'm finding is there is a huge distrust. Am I out of time?
Time is up. Okay, thank you. Mr. Semel?
Yeah, it's Semel. So, I went to Alala Elementary. Yeah, can you hear me? So, I went to Alala Elementary. My name is on the backboard there. When I was in elementary, all the way up, I attended John Cedwick Jr. High. I went to South Kitzab, and the school system has been great to me. And I think that the facilities are very important, but I think it has to be budgeted. I think we have to make sure that we have earmarked the right amount of money for repairs. And I think that that is very important. And to be successful, you have to have good facilities. So, I'm all about upgrading and maintaining facilities, but it has to be in the budget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Question 3. Banning, removing, or restricting access to books and curricula from classrooms and school libraries has become a major issue in public education. Not all books are right for all age groups, and no one wants pornography on a school bookshelf. But many book challenges are because the materials mention racism, LGBTQ identity, brief sexual content, the experiences and history of people who are Black, Indigenous, Jewish, et cetera. Please discuss your views and criteria on what is or is not appropriate for school bookshelves. Ms. Higgins?
Thank you. Yeah, this is a hot topic, I would say, all across the country right now. And there, we get to see a lot of things on social media about these things. And I am not for book banning. I know that I have done a little research, and I know that we, or a lot of research, I called the district and asked them. And we have a committee that is the Instructional Materials Committee, and they are made up of parents, community members, and teachers and staff, and they meet together and they approve, or they come up with a plan of what is appropriate and what is not. So, if someone comes with a book that they don't deem appropriate, that committee reviews that. Everybody reads it. Everybody comes with answers or their opinions and their views, which I think is really powerful to have all those different views come together. And then they bring that to the school board, and then they can approve or disapprove of that. And I find that to be a very useful system, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Cross?
Yes, I don't think there should be any pornographic or any cutting-edge type of books in the public school system. Hopefully, they're getting vetted. Megan mentioned the committee that's supposed to oversee that. Hopefully, they're doing their job. I've heard otherwise that there are some maybe controversial books that are reaching the libraries. And I'm not for that at all. I think if parents want kids to read controversial books on ideologies and sexualization, then they should do that at home in their own time, but I don't believe there's any place for that in schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Villers?
Well, I was in charge of that committee for several years, and I want to note that on that committee, each school board member has a representative that is to attend those meetings. And the purpose of that is so that the community has the ability to be able to put their slant on it or what they think is appropriate, not more appropriate. So, some communities might be more liberal, others might be more conservative, but it really takes the flavor of the community for that. In my experience, I think the system really works. In fact, probably more times did I see staff that stopped books that were going on there, that were teachers that were there that didn't find them appropriate. And of course, there's obviously levels of books depending on if you're looking at it for a kindergartner or you're looking at it for an AP class, if for a senior, that the content might be a little bit more intense than others. But I think the system works, and I would encourage that we all get representatives, whoever's elected on that committee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Edwards?
Well, I would like to refer back to the law, which is RCW 28A, period, 150, period, 230. And school board directors, our job, according to the law, is to evaluate the teaching materials, including textbooks, teaching aids, handouts, or other printed material in public hearing upon any complaint by parents, guardians, or custodians of students who consider dissemination of such material to students objectionable. So, I think it's great to have committees, but if the committees are making decisions and we have parents complaining, then it's up to the board to look at that problem and then make a decision. Everything should be age-appropriate in all of our materials.
Thank you. Mr. Semel?
Yes, so I'm on the conservative side. And my wife actually found 2 books that are in the Selkirk School Library right now. And I read parts of these books, and it was the most nastiest literature I've ever read in my life. And they're in the high school right now. And I didn't, because you can't read them. I tried to read them on a radio show, and they read like the first couple of sentences. They're like, "No, you cannot read this book online." And you can't even read it at the school board meeting. It's that awful. So, if it has to do with incest, beatings, sex, pornographic, any of that, I don't want it in the library. I don't want it around my kids. I don't want it in my house. Like, we got to really watch with being put on those shelves nowadays. So, I'm on the conservative side all the way.
Thank you. Ms. Espy?
Thank you. So, I agree that all literature, you know, curriculum should be age-appropriate. And as Jay and Megan said, we do have the committee at the district. But I don't agree across the board banning of books. Parents have the right to opt out with their child if they feel that something's not appropriate, and we respect those wishes. But we also don't want individual parents making the decision for other parents. And so, it's very, very important that we have parent involvement, and the committee is very important to hear that. But we also will hear from parents, whether it's at school board meetings or, you know, emailing us or however they want to communicate. But across-the-board banning, I'm not for, but age-appropriate, I'm totally for. Our kids need to be educated, and whether it's uncomfortable for us, history needs to be taught. And so, I'm for having appropriate books.
Thank you. Okay, on to question 4. The South Kitzab Long Range Facilities Planning Committee began meeting in 2021 to recommend priorities for addressing deferred maintenance and planned upgrades to district facilities. After 25 meetings, their recommendations were presented to the South Kitzab School Board in April of 2022. What is your response to their recommendations? And what are your thoughts on the condition of facilities in the South Kitzab School District? 60 seconds, and we'll start with Mr. Cross.
Yes, I've been following the Long Range Facilities Committee since about that time. I think it was sold to the public as just a group of community members, but if you really look at all the people on the committee, they were all like a bunch of people that have been involved before, and they're either like married teachers, ex-teachers. I didn't see a lot of expertise on that committee. Take away maybe Rick Prentis. He's in the construction field, not a lot of construction background. And I just think with $271 million plus another 220 in interest, we should have had some professional consultants and maybe some outside people looking at the actual shape of the schools. It seems like the whole thing is to target the older schools, which, you know, of course, they need upkeep and work, but I don't know if we need to bulldoze them down and build brand-new at a super high cost to the community.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Villers?
Well, I've been on a few of those committees, and I know that after 20-some meetings, oftentimes, they look at each school, they look at the pros and cons of the school, they have guest speakers which are from the industry to come and talk about what would be cost-effective and not cost-effective. People are invited to be on that, and I really appreciate the folks that are on that committee that they're making it work. I support their outcome. I think that we need to really get started on changing things on our schools and working on facilities. It may not be what everybody wants, the plan, but that's what happens when you gather together in a democracy and determine what the needs are. I'm excited that we're moving forward with trying to pass a bond to make that happen and try to get these resources there. So, I have a lot of faith in the community, I mean, in the community and that process for that committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Edwards?
Yeah, well, I am totally opposed to the current bond that has been presented. I did attend the bond meetings. WASDA, which is an organization that advises schools, has been saying for the last year that we should be consolidating. That is what they've done in Bellevue just this year. That is what they did in North Kitzab. And we have 10 elementary schools, and we could easily go down to 6. So, I feel like we're spending $271 million, okay? And everything is based on a 4% interest rate. Now, I'm in real estate, done some lending, worked at a bank, and I know that the current rate is 8.1%. Yesterday, they announced it, 8 and 8%. Our payment on that bond is going to be $26 million, $26,216,905 per year.
Okay, okay, thank you. Mr. Semel?
Yes, so I'm also against the bond that has been presented. I think that right now, I think the plan is poorly done. I think that trying to do all of these projects, and they're not all going to happen at once. They've been presented like they're all going to happen at once, but they're not going to all happen at once. And so, you've got this high interest, like Rhonda just said, and you're going to start, maybe start some projects, but then there's other projects you probably won't get to for 5 to 7 years. So, why am I paying interest on the money to do that project? You know, and so I just, I think I would like to see, I feel like there hasn't been a lot of success either. So, you look at the pool, the budgeting of the pool, how they haven't kept budget. So, from what I've seen, I just think that there's a lack of trust between the taxpayer and the school system, is what I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Espy?
So, the long-range group spent a couple of years, if not a little bit longer, working together, multiple different people. You did have school district folks. You also had community members. And these folks went to every school and evaluated every school. And as Jay said, they had the experts in the field come in and talk to them about what could be done, what needed to be done. And with having so many portables in our district, which is also a safety issue, besides the fact there's not a lot, you can And with having so many portables in our district, which is also a safety issue, besides the fact there's not a lot you can do with them, uh, changes needed to be made. And then we took that to the community and got community input. And what we would have liked more community input, but what was put together, I am totally in agreement with. And we need to move forward, as Jay said, and do what's best for our kids.
Okay, thank you, uh, Ms. Higgins.
Yes, uh, I am in full support of the bond and the recommendations that were made by the Long Range Committee. Um, there was so much research done. Two years is such a long time. And uh, what I have to say is that it's been too long and it's time for us to support our schools. Um, we keep saying every bond, this is not what we want. This is not, this is not enough. This is not what we want, but this one is different. Um, it's a different look. It addresses all of our schools and it looks at all of our issues and it prioritized them. Will it fix every issue? No, but it will start and I want to start now and I am so hopeful for this bond. I have seen a very positive response in the community. When I talk to people about it, they're excited to replace these schools. They're excited to see the community moving forward and that we're not just trying to do the same old thing that they've been trying to do in the past, that this is really looking at what the community needs and it is very needed.
Thank you. Okay, question five. Who are the supporters of your candidacy and what are the funding sources for your campaign? Please include individuals, groups, and organizations. If, for example, you received one thousand dollars from the Flat Earth Society, do not disguise that contribution by claiming it came from a friend, even if you are friendly with flat earthers. Sixty seconds, Mr. Villers.
Well, first of all, I as the supporters, of course, are friends and family and the people that I have got to got to know and work with in the school district uh, and in this community. Um, I am been endorsed by the Teachers Association. I've been endorsed by, uh, WEA. Um, I've been endorsed by, uh, one of the local trade locals unions, uh, in the area. Um, I have, uh, the District thirty twenty six has, uh, has supported me as well and, um, a various, uh, individuals that are in the community that have donated some money to the to the campaign. I have, um, so I I think I I don't know if I'm knee, I don't, I'm not gonna say or name every individual that was that was there, but those were the big groups that that I was talking about that that have been supportive in in my role. And I I believe the school supporters also have endorsed me. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Edwards.
Yes, I have done, uh, received campaign donations and it's been mostly from, again, family, friends and new people that I've met at all the various events that I've actually gone to speak to. And those that, um, could did go ahead and donate to my campaign. And that has been, I have not gone for any union money and no teachers' union, no organizations having to do with teachers, because when I get on the board, I do not want to have any conflict of interest. I don't want to feel like I'm beholden to any organization. So I will always put the parents, the students first.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Samuel.
Yes, so friends and family, I I haven't received that many donations. I've pretty much funded funded my own signs and website or whatever. I I I too, uh, have no groups or or unions or or anybody that I'm tied to. I'm I'm tied to the truth and making the right decision. I want to, I want to make the right decision for our community and for our children. And, um, that's what's important to me. So.
Forty-five an hour?
Thank you, uh, Ms. Espy.
So I have had endorsements from the Kitsap County Democratic Women, the twenty sixth Legislative District, uh, Planned Parenthood Alliance, South Kitsap School Supporters, South Kitsap Education Association, and a lot of support, uh, and help from friends and family. Uh, and just to mention that, um, I won't feel beholden to any of these organizations because they endorse me because of what I had to say and they already heard what I had to say. And I will stick to what I have to say and what I stand for. And and I appreciate all the help and support and encouragement as this is my first campaign I've ever run. So I really appreciated, um, all their help and support.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Higgins.
Uh, yes, I have been, um, approached by many people in the community that have uh, gotten to know me and they have offered their support. I have also been, um, endorsed by the Stanford Children Group, um, South Kitsap School Supporters, the twenty sixth Legislative District, uh, Kitsap County Democratic Women, the National Women's Political Caucus, the Washington Education Association. Um, I think there might be a couple more that I'm missing. If you go to my website, I have list endorsements and, um, I need to update that too, uh, and I will, um, but I have been really trying to get myself out there in the community and uh, I have been telling people my views and then people have supported me in those. And so I, again, I am not beholden to anybody, but it is important to get my views out and get let people get to know me. And so I've taken that opportunity for people to get to know me in lots of ways, and this is one of them. And, um, those are my supporters.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Cross.
Uh, I believe I was endorsed by the Kitsap County Republican Party Committee, although they have not given me any money. Uh, I started my campaign with five hundred dollars of my own money. I have received uh, donations from community members. Uh, there's a list of them, just regular people, no affiliations. Um, Brian Nielsen, he contributed. He owns Brothers Power Sports. Uh, Morgan Hamley gave me some, uh, a donation. And, uh, other than that, it's just community members. I'm not beholden to any of the, uh, any of the big unions or any anything like that. It seems like the the, you know, the entire board right now is all union backed. It's all pretty much all the same people with the same ideas, not a lot of discussion. It's all the same backers. And I guess if you're happy with the way things are going now, then you might want to vote for certain people.
Okay, thank you. Uh, question six. Uh, and most of you have responded to this somewhat in the earlier question, but do you support or oppose the twenty-one-year, two hundred and seventy-one million dollar school bond that will appear on the November ballot? And why? Ms. Edwards.
Well, I am a no. I I am for a bond. I understand that we need to improve our present schools. I understand that we need new schools, but I don't know why we would spend forty-eight million dollars for a new school at Alala Elementary that services two hundred and seventy students on property that has a salmon bearing stream that needs a new septic and drain field, which will be impossible. They're increasing the size of the school eleven thousand square feet when enrollment has steadily gone down. And we have fifteen acres on Banner Road. We could easily build one new school and not build a Lala Elementary, not build a South Colby, not interrupt a whole year of learning for those kids where we're trying to do construction and teach. So we have other options far less money and frankly, our district cannot afford the cost. Uh, two million dollar payments is not reasonable.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Samuel.
Hello. So like I said earlier, I'm I'm against the bond. I I I I want to see the schools upgraded. I want to see a plan put in place. I'd like to see the land school owns developed and make new schools and maybe follow the C K hybrid. But, um, yeah, I just don't, I don't like the amount of money. I don't like the amount of interest and I don't like investing in people that can't hold a budget on small projects. I just don't invest my money with people that continually fail. So that's that's my point. And, uh, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Espy.
So all of our schools are old. And like I said earlier, the youngest is thirty years old. And unfortunately, we live in a world where, uh, our kids need to be safe. They need to be able to learn. They need to be able to have fun. And their environment needs to continue to be safe. The bond would immediately, and yes, over time, uh, it is going to take some time to get some of this done. But, uh, rebuilding needs, we're going to do immediate rebuilding needs, ensure safety, uh, improvement district-wide, keep the local tax rate to two thousand and twenty-two numbers. This supports all students and we're going to reinvest in our students and our entire community. So building and upgrading district facilities is just paramount and passing the bottom would ensure this. So yes, I am for the bond.
Okay, um, uh, Ms. Higgins.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, I definitely am for the bond. Um, I and in response to how much money it will be, um, it will be the same tax rate as it was in the year two thousand and twenty-two. And so you won't see an increase in taxes from the year two thousand and twenty-two. So if you were okay with that tax rate, it's going to stay the same and we're going to do the best we can with the money that we're given to fulfill the basic needs of our kids. Now, we may have different views on how to do that, but we've got to start somewhere. And, um, this will also eliminate forty-three portable classrooms. And I just, I feel really awful for those kids who are stuck in portable classrooms, especially when they're they need to shelter in place for very different reasons. They don't have access to bathrooms. They don't have access to water. They don't have access to snacks. And I just, if you have young children, those are all very, very important things to have access to, and they're the bare minimum of things. And I think that um, I have hope and I I think it's, I think it's happening. So that's my view.
Uh, Mr. Cross.
Yeah, I'm not for the bond as it's, uh, been presented. Uh, back to Mr. Villars, I did try and get on the Facilities Committee two years in a row and I was denied to get on. Kate was on the board when I got denied. Uh, no real good reason not to let me on. I'm just a community member that wanted to be involved. I didn't manage to get on the Bond Scaring Committee and uh, Ms. Higgins has all the talking points down about the the, you know, portables and everything they talked about on how we're going to sell it to the community. And I just don't, I think we could do some smaller capital levies and get the schools up to snuff. I don't know how they managed to get in such terrible shape that they are now besides mismanagement of, uh, funds and no upkeep. And as for the safety, uh, my kids are in school right now and Ms. Espy's seems to think the schools aren't safe. So if the schools aren't safe, I don't know if I should be sending my kids there. We might have a big problem. So I just think, uh, I think we just need to get a reasonable, sensible plan together and move forward with that. But the second high school, what happened to the overcrowding at the high school? That should be front and center.
Time, uh, Mr. Villers.
Yeah, so over thirty years ago, I bought property here in Kitsap County where I live today and the real estate folks, you know, were chatting up the schools and how great they were. And and to me, you know, I was excited about that. I thought my youngest kid would go to the second high school that was going to be built and uh, now being thirty years old, he didn't didn't go there. And I've seen this scenario go over and over again where we we present to try to get support for our schools and resources and then uh, we don't get quite the right amount of votes for it, which is what people people determine, but we need to be behind it to make sure that these resources are stable and that we can make improvements. Uh, I'm an accreditation coach for the state of Washington. I've been to school districts like Central Kitsap who passed their bond when we didn't party barely pass ours and they have fantastic facilities there. And those kids are getting a great education with variety of programs, yet ours kids don't get those same opportunities. They get great education, but they don't get the same things that the others do. And I'm about tired of that. So I think it's time for us to to pull together and and support our schools.
Okay, question seven. The phrases separation of church and state and the wall of separation between church and state were coined by Thomas Jefferson. Where do you see the line being drawn between religion and the state as it relates to public schools? Should the state ever fund religious programs? Uh, Mr. Samuel.
Okay, so my phone kind of cut out there. So it's it sounded like you were talking about church and state. Um, and so I I believe that, um, the more that you take God out of society and out of the classroom, the worse your society and the worse your classroom is going to get. Um, so I I am a, I do believe in God. I believe that in the Constitution and I believe that, uh, our forefathers believed deeply in God. It's on our one dollar bill. Um, so, yeah, I I that's that's what I believe. I I hopefully I answered that correctly. My phone's kind of cutting out and, uh, sorry about that.
Oh, thank you, uh, Ms. Espy.
So I feel that there should be a separation. Uh, if parents choose to have their children go to a school that's uh, religious based, they have that option. Um, I think public school should be about public education and and all that we can do to give students the best education for their future. Uh, when you, you know, have this combination and you have parents or others who are trying to step over that line, it causes a lot of confusion. And again, like I said, if parents choose to have their children go somewhere else, I that's totally their choice. But we need to stick to public education and and have our focus on that education for the children of South Kitsapmen, you know, across the state and across the U.S.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Higgins.
I, I believe in separation of church and state. Um, I am a very religious person. I am Christian. Um, I have many beliefs, uh, but I know that I, there are lots of people in our community and they don't all share my beliefs and they shouldn't have to, uh, listen to my beliefs if that's not theirs. It is, uh, there are different cultures. There's different people and we're all coming together in one public space, which I think is wonderful to have all those views coming together and learning in the same environment. And we can learn a lot from one another. But if we are trying to uh, preach our own religion to other people, I think that that is the wrong setting for this. Um, I think that this is where the parents can educate their children on their culture and on their religious beliefs and that the schools, um, aren't is not, that's not a place for that. You can learn about different religions, but not in a way that teaches what is right and wrong.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Cross.
Yes, I love Jesus, my Lord and Savior, and I love God. And I think there should be separation of church and state at the schools. There's many different religions and people have many different viewpoints. That being said, I also don't think the school should be pushing pride because that's like a religion that goes against my religion and my beliefs and my children's beliefs. And I don't think it belongs anywhere in the school. As Megan said, personal beliefs should be kept out of the schools that's taught at home. And I think it's almost treated as religion these days. And it's a people worship it and it not everybody agrees with that. And I don't think that should be in schools. So, uh, just like maybe Christianity shouldn't be pitched in schools. Ideologies of any kind should not be pushed at schools. It should be about education.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Villers.
Yeah, I as, uh, you know, um, Ed, there's a, I believe passionately in the in the separation of church and state, but I also believe that education is 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 key. And for us to understand each other, we need to learn different religions and different cultures and diversity and inclusion. And our curriculum in the state and and then this nation has us to study different groups so that we can understand all of those beliefs. But that's not the same as uh, trying to, uh, force someone's right religion on someone else. And so it's very important that um, we partner with our community, which could be churches. And I know that we do that with facilities in our community. We do that with backpacks for kids and a variety of ways, but we're not taking the actual beliefs of that group and forcing them onto another onto our children. But we do teach our children about variety of religions as as part of our curriculum so that we can become good community and world members. And so, um, that those are my views on it. And I I again, it should be separate and I would, uh, work with that.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Edwards.
Yes, I do believe in separation, um, between state and religion. As you said, As you say, there's many, many religions. And you know, we have a lot of people coming in from other countries with their own religions. So to, you know, include all would take away from reading, writing, arithmetic. And that's where I want to focus is on education. And I don't want any indoctrination in the school whatsoever at all. Um so keeping it separate is good. Now, do we learn about different religions? Yes, we do, and history. Um I know when I went to school, I took a class from Miss Eads, um Bible as Literature, and it was very enlightening. And I appreciated what she had to offer. She's a great teacher, very inspiring. But I do think that we need to keep our eye on the ball and educate our kids. So they are prepared to go out in the world and be successful.
Thank you, uh question eight. How would you work to promote academic gains in the South Kitsap Schools, Ms Espy?
So academic success is my top priority. And there are many different ways to approach that. Obviously monitoring test scores. Uh we want to make sure that the kids are able to show what they're learning. But also, there are other ways to monitor that, uh committees, uh parent involvement. Not all kids take tests well. Uh I do remember my two kids, one did well, one didn't do well with tests, but their grades were good. And so it's important to do a variety of different things so that we can encourage our kids. Because every kid learns differently. And if we have only one way of monitoring, then we're not getting a true uh report on what's going on with our kids. But academic achievement needs to be improved, we can all agree to that, and we need to really work on that.
Thank you, uh Ms Higgins.
Um yeah, I really like, there's been a parent partnership program that started by the district. And the parents can come in and talk to um the district about what they think that would be helpful. I think that as we work with parents more, we will get more academic gains. I know that when my child is struggling, I am able to text, we, there are programs in place where I'm able to text the teacher and say, hey, my kid is having kind of hard day today, and they're able to respond, and I really appreciate that communication that we have available in the district. Um I would like to look at test scores and I'm a very data-driven person, uh but I also know that test scores aren't everything. Um kids have bad days, kids are people, they're real, they're real people. And so I, they um some don't test well, and but we also need to try and get those test scores up. So I think there are lots of ways that we can do that, working with parents and working on committees. And really zoning in on what we want to focus on to make academics better in this district.
Thank you, uh Mr Cross.
Uh could you please repeat the question?
Yes, how would you work to promote academic gains in the South Kitsap Schools?
That's a great question. Um that question, that really needs to be visited. I know we have over fifty percent of the teachers in South Kitsap are master's degree or higher. So why aren't the kids learning at a higher level? I mean, there's, there's many questions that go behind that. And it's uh, you know, the, the scores aren't much better around the state. So we need to uh look at the uh look at why, I mean, I, I don't have the answers, we need to form some committees, we need to maybe get the teachers together and personally talk to them. Is it the curriculum? Are we changing curriculum too much where the teachers can't get comfortable with the curriculum and learn how to teach it? Um it's just, it's, there's so many questions about that that really need to be delved into. And I, like I say, I've been going to board meetings for three years and I've never once heard them talk about putting any kind of committee together to look into what we can do better. Especially coming out of uh the shutdown, you know, we should be hyper focused on education right now, not bonds.
Thank you, uh Mr Villars.
Yeah, I, I think I appreciate what Mr Cross is saying in terms of uh, I believe that we really need to look at the assessment in the classroom. And as the, and give, give more tools to the teacher so that when they introduce a concept or they're trying to find mastery. They can do assessments that are meaningful and they'll have time to collaborate with other teachers in their, in their field to be able to, to say, hey, these, this is, this data shows this, that we're not learning this, might, might be a particular fraction problem, might be a multiplication issue for a particular piece. But it takes the group to collaborate with, collaborate with that and to, and do those assessments in the classroom to make the growth that they need to move further on, on state assessments. And so again, I would want to have more uh information and more staff development in the hands of the, of teachers so that they can analyze what they're doing, make corrections, help kids uh and, and get the right tools they need to make that happen. So that's, that's what, what I would want to do if I was on the school board and push for those things. Thank you.
Uh Ms Edwards.
Yes, academics is one of my most important things that I'm running on. Um third grade class, ten elementary schools. And only thirty eight percent of that third grade class could read at third grade level at the end of the year. That is absolute failure. And so that means sixty two percent is going to be passed on to four and be behind. And that is only going to exasperate as they continue year over year over year. So I believe in intervention, testing early, looking at the curriculum. Looking at every teacher that's teaching third grade to see who is having the most success. And why is that person having more success than another? We need to take advantage of the one hundred and twenty four million dollars that the governor has set aside for tutoring. And so I have a way to use that as well.
Thank you, uh Mr Samuel. Uh you're, you're muted, Mr Samuel.
Okay, sorry about that, here I am. So I believe in a co-op between the parents and the teachers in the school board. And I've attended a, a lot of school board meetings. And I feel like we should be bringing up education, we should be, we should be inviting teachers to bring in reports. We should be focusing on different grades and having a meeting on, let's talk about sixth grade reading, let's talk about third grade reading. Let's, let's get a report together from the teachers on what's successful, what's not successful, who's struggling, who's not struggling. And then inviting the parents to also bring in solutions. Like, I feel like the school board meetings are so poorly run, there's no plan for the community to get better. And the only way to get better is for the teachers and the parents and the school board to work together to make things better. There's, there's just really no plan in place. And so I think it's just a co-op, working everybody together.
Thank you. Okay, question dying. Please tell us about your own school and educational experiences. What would you change if you could go back in time, Ms Higgins?
Hi, uh I attended a school that was very supportive of both the arts and of sports. And um it was a small town. Um and they did a great job though of coming together and supporting everybody. And I would really love to see that for this community. And um I would, uh there, there were events that would happen in my school where um they had this fundraising event that everybody would attend in town. And I was able to participate in that and it was mostly for the arts and um kids from sports to, sports kids. And everybody involved uh would be involved in that community event, and I really appreciated that. And I would love to see that kind of support from this community. I think that we have a negative view right now of the support. And I think that that's about to change, that the community really wants to support the schools and that they're going to come together and support the schools.
Thank you, uh Mr Cross.
Um question again, please, you're asking if I could go back to school, what I would change when I was back.
Well, I said, tell, tell, tell us about your own school and educational experiences. And what would you change if you could go back in time?
Um I went to a lot of different schools. I went to uh six different elementary schools and then I did Marcus Whitman in South Kitsap. I uh, I don't really know what I would change. I think it was a lot simpler back then. And uh looking back, you know, it was a little more strict, which is probably good. And um I think the kids were getting a good education. And I don't know where we've believed, you know, things have just kind of gone sideways on that. I don't feel that sense of community, there's a good sense of community back in the day. Everybody was uh, people were actually moving here in the eighties because of the great schools and education. And it seems like the, the growth of the community has kind of disenfranchised the uh, the field that Port Orchard used to have. And uh a lot of transitional housing now and not a lot of people are uh moving here to settle. A lot of people have settled here and they're still here and they're kids, but uh just lost that sense of community.
Thank you, uh Mr Villars.
Yeah, I've worked, I uh, I really enjoyed my, my uh school career, uh elementary, uh middle school, high school. Lot of opportunities, uh was, had a lot of great uh community involvement. And um and it, and it was, I felt supported as an individual in the schools. If I was going to change anything back in time, I would like to change that we have a strong, had a stronger focus on equity, inclusion and diversity. I think that our special needs students, when I was going to school, weren't probably supported as well as they were as I became an adult and led an educator. Uh I think that we have, uh we've been working on equity and we've been working on inclusion. And I think those things are, are great, but those would be the things that I would try to change if, from, from, from my school experience. Um and I, I, I certainly want to change the fact that we, we need, we need a community to really support our schools and, and be one hundred percent with that. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Ms, uh Ms Edwards.
Yeah, you know, like I say, I was born and raised in Port Orchard, um third generation. And I went through Orchard Heights, um went through, well, actually started at Pleasant Valley, if you can believe that. And uh then Orchard Heights, Marcus Whitman, and then I was the very first class to go through Cedar Heights. And I loved that school, it was so awesome to go into a brand new school. Um you know, unfortunately, it was built on a bog. And you know, building another school on the other half of the bog isn't necessarily a great idea when we have thirty seven acres out by McCormick Woods that we could build on. Uh but nevertheless, um I enjoyed my school years. I actually started going to college when I was a sophomore, night classes. And I was able to transfer all my credits. And I basically graduated when I turned seventeen and started school my senior year. So I was ready to get out there and become the entrepreneur that, that I am.
Thank you, uh Mr Samuel.
I guess I'm having our time. So I, I went to Loll Elementary, Denny Bond was my principal, I, I loved it there. I went to John Sedgwick Junior High and it was, it was new back then and I had a blast. At, I mean, I had a, had a great uh junior high. And then in high school, I lived, lived the dream and I was supported by the community. Um I thrived in sports, I went on to play college football, I graduated from Central Washington University. And you know, honestly, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go back and change, change anything. I, I loved, I loved, high school, it was funny, high school is everything, high school is an eternity. It was like, you know, people think to the kids, it doesn't matter, it does matter, every day matters. And if a kid isn't getting the support they need, they could be walking a living hell. So we need to support our kids. I, I felt supported, I flourished, I own multiple businesses. It might not look like that because I'm in the car and my face is dark, I guess I wasn't prepared for this. But uh, you know, uh usually I am prepared and um and that's all because
In time.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, and Ms Espy.
So I went to numerous schools, my dad was in the air force and so I lived all over the world. But I ended up going to high school in Nebraska because that's where we got stationed when I was in high school. Which was a little traumatic after living in the Far East. I truly enjoyed all my different schools. Uh high school was the first uh civilian school I went to, so that was a new world for me. Um I loved it, the community was supportive, had a great time. The only thing that I would change is in my senior year, they split our high school, they built a new one. And so half the kids went to the new high school. And um I lost some of my really great teachers. And we weren't allowed to go to the new high school to get those classes if you lived in a certain area and had to stay at the whole old high school. And the place needed some upgrades, so that was tough. But overall, I truly enjoyed all my schooling uh everywhere I went.
Thank you, uh and uh this is the last question, question ten. Why should we vote for you, Mr Cross?
Um you should vote for me, I'm a lifelong community member, I have kids in the school district now. I've graduated other kids through the system. I was uh in the system myself as, at South Kitsap as well as my parents. And uh I'm third, fourth generation, Port Orchard. I have been attending the board meetings for the last three years. I know the uh, the way they work, the ins and outs, I was on the bond steering committee. I tried to get on the facilities committee, I bring a, I own a business, successful business in Port Orchard for the last thirty five years. I bring a different aspect, I'm community-based, I'm community-backed, I have no ties to any of the unions or any of the big groups. No Planned Parenthood ties. Um I'm just going in there because I'm a parent and I think we can do better. And I think we need to focus on education and stop focusing on emotions and pride and all the uh, all the ideologies have no place in school, we need to focus on education and the kids. And I do support SK schools, I don't support the bond. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Mr Villars.
Well, I've been a lifelong educator, that's been my career, uh I've always been a student-centered, uh kid-centered uh individual. And I want what's best for them, whether it be facilities or their achievement or their emotional support. How or, or how they're actually being treated in, in schools. Uh I've had a lot of experience within the schools, I, again, as I stated earlier, that I do know the things that work. And I know some of the things that don't work and the challenges that we have. And I am a hundred percent for this community to have a fantastic school so that we can have world-class education for our students. Um with me, I'm also a very collaborative leader, I listen. Uh I can make a good sound judgment that I think is sensible. And I think we need to have that and start moving, moving forward and doing what's best for our community and our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Ms Edwards.
Hi, well, I hope that South Kitsap will elect me to position number five. I think I bring a fresh perspective, you know, speaking of diversity, I think we need some business people on the board. People that have the experience of laying awake at night, thinking about how they can grow their business. How they're going to face adversity that's coming their way with our up and down economies. Um I bring a wealth of business experience, running three different real estate brokerages. Um I was part of a construction retail business in both Gors and in Paul's Bow. Um part of a company that I just recently sold for property management. And thirty seven years of business experience will bring financial accountability. I am for academic progress, I am all for transparency. And I want absolute total parent involvement. And that means we will change the time of the board meeting to six o'clock so everybody can get off work and participate.
Thank you, uh Mr Samuel. Okay, and we lost the connection there, I'm so sorry. Well, if we get him back, we'll, we'll put him back in the, the lineup here, uh Ms Espy.
So I was appointed to the school board, like I said earlier, December of twenty one. So I have a couple of years of experience and I'm also the legislative representative for the school board. I have learned lots during those two and a half years, but of course, I have a whole lot more that I uh can learn. I think it's really, really important uh for the students and parents of South Kitsap that, I mean, they just deserve to have the best education that we can give to them. And I think one of the things that I have gotten much better at is listening. Um I worked with critical patients most of my nursing career and I learned how to listen and not make judgments prior to uh having them finish. I think it's important that we push transparency and hear from parents, students and school district employees. And I feel I have the skills to continue to do that.
Thank you, and uh Ms. Higgins?
Um yeah, you should vote for me. I have some experience. I worked for Seattle Children's for a few years in the research department and I got the opportunity to talk with a lot of families um about their experience in the hospital and some were positive experiences and some were negative experiences. And I think that they gave me a lot of experience talking with people from all different backgrounds and able to talk to them um about their grievances and help them work through those. And I feel like as a school board member, your job is to really talk with the community, have, respond to uh what their wishes are and I listen to understand different perspectives than my own. Um I really want to make sure that everybody's voices are heard. I understand that people come from very different backgrounds that are very different from mine and I want to, I feel like I can make um that I can represent a group that are, that are younger parents um in the community as well.
Thank you, and it looks like Mr. Samuel is is, he's, are you back? If you are, uh go ahead, why should we vote for you?
I'm trying to be back, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I made it back. Uh so I, I'm driving and doing this and I'm trying to get better reception. So my apologies to everybody out there. Um so you should vote for me. I, you know, I was thinking about this uh while I was driving, trying to get reception and I know how hard it is to be a parent that's concerned child's well-being, especially their development. And if your child can't read, can't write, they can't make any money. And it's very merit that they, they need right? Otherwise they can't make money and they can't take care of themselves. So and as a parent, you really, you have that fear. I, I want my son to be successful and we, we push reading and writing hard at the house and, and that's the most important thing to a kid, not sports, not how cool they are, not how they look.
Hey, we got time and, and we're, we're losing you too. Thank, thank you, Mr. Samuel. So we come to uh the closing statement. And uh, everybody will have ninety seconds and uh we're going to start with Mr. Villars.
So um I, as uh, if I get on the school board, uh I'm excited again to be able to share, build relationships between the community and the um and, and the schools. I know that uh the schools aren't perfect and I spent my whole career talking to people in the community about that and, and struggles. I know that there are two sides to every story and the more communication that we have and be able to understand each other, the, the more, the more positive results that we're getting out there. I think that it's a responsibility of the community to seek that information and I also think it's a responsibility of the school district to seek the information from the community. Uh again, uh if we don't, if you don't know the answer to something, you make something up in your head and it may be the wrong thing and you may be making wrong assumptions. So I'm excited to be part of the South Kitsap School Board and to be, help, help steer the ship in that way and to help serve our students, our parents, our community and our staff. And uh as, as a member of that, I will do everything that I can to um represent that well and to represent those constituents. Not necessarily beholden if there's a problem because it's, it's how I make decisions and I think that's why people uh will elect me is because of the way that I can make decisions and the, my ability and my good judgment. So, thank you.
Thank you, uh Ms. Edwards.
Yes, I, I really hope that I get on the board because I have wonderful ideas. Um I see the problems and I've been working on the solutions to the problems. I believe that there is no reason why we can't have eighty percent of our third graders by the end of next year reading at third grade level. If you don't try, if you don't acknowledge you have a problem, you can't fix it. So I'm ready to acknowledge what the problems are. I am ready to roll up my sleeves. I am ready to come up with the solutions and solve problems. Nothing is more important than academic progress and success and we are not educating our children right now. And we are leaving too many behind. And we know that when they get behind, the chances of them graduating go down by twenty-five to thirty percent. I am completely for parental rights. I feel that parents, people say, oh, we want the parents involved, but yet they hold a meeting at five o'clock. And oh, if you don't sign up by five o'clock, you cannot be heard. Well, I say, we start the meeting at six, six-thirty. Anyone who gets there in time can sign up and we talk and listen to the parents first. And anyone that comes afterwards also has a chance to talk again at the end of the meeting. And I would like to see um us to have community meetings quarterly and I want to hear from parents' open door policy.
Thank you, uh Mr. Samuel.
Okay, I think I'm live here. I want to thank the, the League of Women. I also want to thank all the candidates. Can you hear me? Can you guys hear me? I hope so. Okay, so I also want to thank all the candidates. I think it, it's uh, you know, take all of you and I, and I hope and I pray that if you get elected, that you would do your duty and your I think I should get voted in and you should vote for me because I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold people accountable. I'm gonna hold the superintendent accountable. I'm gonna make plans, strategy. I'm gonna make uh learning the most important. We got to be educated. We can't be successful and not be able to read or write. And so that's going to be my, my number one goal is to get our community educated and, and make sure the kids feel supported. And um, and I can do that because I also have had a lot of successful businesses and I, I understand teamwork. You're nothing. So if you're just a boss, you're nothing without your employees. It's a team game. I want to turn the school board into a team game. All five positions need to work well to we all have to have ideas. You have to invite the parents in to be successful. You have to know what the kids are. Let's talk to the kids. What's going on with the kids? Let's, let's figure out, you know, what they need, what they're going well and what's not going well. I, I, that's what I'm good at and I'd like, I'd like to serve and I, I hope you vote for John Samuel.
Thank you, uh Ms. Espy.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Well, I also want to thank uh the League of Women Voters of Kitsap for sponsoring this forum. Uh I really appreciate uh being, having all of us be able to have the public hear what we have to say. I've been honored to serve as a District One Board Member and Legislative Representative for the last two and a half years. And, and representing, you know, our amazing S K students, staff, their parents and the whole community has been an honor. Uh the students of South Kitsap should have the best education that can be offered. Their parents and the community should be able to expect honesty, honesty and transparency from the board and the entire district. Um that's just paramount uh that we can show what we're doing, why we're doing it and hear from them. Uh I also believe, as I said earlier, it's very important to listen to all and not form an opinion uh before they've explained what they have to say. You need to hear everything. That includes listening to students, parents, district staff and the community. Uh that means the board works together. Um board can only get things done when they work to collaborative. Um and I'll always accept the majority's uh ruling. I think it's very important we work together. I, my focus is on the students of South Kitsap and what's best for them. So please, I'd love to be elected. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Ms. Higgins.
Yeah, um I, in closing, I am a mom of young kids and that would bring a fresh perspective on the board. And I uh was talking about my experience with Seattle Children's, but I also had the opportunity to tutor math classes last year um in Marcus Whitman and I really got to know the students there and I really um, I really want this uh district to succeed for not only my children, but those kids as well. Um I really uh, I loved all of them. They all came from very different backgrounds and the teacher knew so much about each one of them and all of their families. Those kids, as we were going through math, things happened to them, family members died. Um kids were not, kids were homeless and still coming to school and those are the situations that are happening in our district and we need to respond to all of those kids and make sure that they have the resources that they need to be successful. And we, I am a voice for accessibility. I would really love to see our schools be accessible for wheelchair users um and really update our buildings in that way and make sure that we are giving an education for everyone, that everyone can benefit. And I'm a voice for the, the voiceless and for all of the kids um that are in this community.
Thank you, and finally, Mr. Cross.
Yeah, thanks for having us out tonight. Appreciate it. Uh I mean, you got, you got a big choice this time around. You know, you have three uh, three candidates that are backed by the uh teachers unions and the education associations and you have some other candidates that are just backed by the community that have made it this far. So the choices couldn't be clearer. Um the current board now is uh pretty much backed by the teachers unions and the W E A and the S K E A and all those groups. So if you're happy with the way things are going now, then I, you're, I'm probably not your guy because I'm gonna have a different outlook. We got to focus on education period. That's the board's number one priority is education and budget and parental rights. And you got to communicate with the community. I've sent many of the current board members, Ms. Espy included, emails and have never gotten one response. So you know, it's, it's the same old song and dance and uh you know, let's, let's try something new. Let's get some community members in there. I have no, you know, I, I, I have no skin in the game. I have no teachers. I wasn't a teacher. I'm just an outsider that wants to have a voice for the community. So I'd appreciate your vote, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidates, uh thank you all for taking the time to join us this evening. A well-informed electorate is critical to our democracy. Events such as this forum are one way to achieve that goal. Voters, hopefully this forum has helped you choose your candidates. Ballots for the November seventh general election will be mailed by October twentieth, so keep an eye out for yours. The League is encouraging voters to vote early and return their ballots as soon as possible, preferably to one of Kitsap County's twenty-five ballot drop boxes. Their locations can be found on the Kitsap Auditor's website. The eleven Kitsap candidate and issue forums being held October second through the eighteenth have been or will be recorded and links to those videos can be found on our website at L W V dash Kitsap dot org. Please encourage others to view the forums and vote. Thank you for attending and good night.
Thank you.